I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here, please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with citizens appearances and presentations. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education who did not sign up on the yellow sheet? Seeing none at this time, I would like to ask Sharon Langsloth-Johnson from Palatine Township and Eileen Cohn from the Women's Club of Inverness to come forward to address the Board of Education.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Langsloth-Johnson. I'm Palatine Township Supervisor. As this is the, I think, third year we've been actually in front of the Board. Each year, the Township does our Apple Tree program, which is we collect school supplies and we supply them throughout from kindergarten through high school, actually. We extend the program to high schoolers for all the families that cannot afford the school supplies. We all know how expensive they can be these days. And in addition to that, because of the iPad program, many of the children cannot afford or their families cannot afford the insurance. So each year, we apply for a grant through the Women's Club. And with that grant, we actually match the grant now. And we are able to help supply the funds for the children to get their iPad insurance. God knows that they need it as much as we all need it. But I'm going to let Eileen give you some information about the Women's Club.
Thank you, Sharon. It's my privilege to acknowledge the $2,000 grant that Women's Club already distributed last May when the members approved our philanthropy distributions and that it's being matched once again. I've actually volunteered for Apple Tree. It was a very rewarding experience. Last May, I concluded my two-year term as President. I now serve as Director for two years, kind of an advisor. But during my tenure and due to tremendous support from the members, we returned over $142,000 to the community with 54,000 in scholarships and 88,000 in grant awards similar to the iPad insurance. I've been a member for most of my 25 years that I've lived in Inverness. And as the club starts our 53rd year, people don't realize how old we are. Yeah, a little old. Yeah, I'm a little older than that. I wanted to share some impressive stats of Women's Club giving. We began fundraising modestly in the 1980s. They would give scholarships for Harper summer internship. And part of that was the Harper Fashion Show provided the fashions for our first ever fashion show. You know, now we hire a professional fashion house production and we have over 450, 500 women. All of our proceeds, we return back to the community. And that now totals 1.24 million. Of this amount, over 800,000 was given in grants to assist children, women, families, and seniors. And then our scholarship program, which began modestly as I just described, that has grown. And since we began, over 350 students were awarded a scholarship. Almost 90%, 85-90% of these students were from District 211. So for a total of $400,000 in scholarships as of last May. So as a District 211 graduate, along with my three siblings and my two children, it has been personally rewarding to support the WCI mission and what we do for the community. And I thank you and for the opportunity to come here tonight.
So in addition to the funds to get, our funds that the money comes from is our needy family fund. And that, our needy family fund incorporates pretty much anything that people need help with. It could be fixing a car, it could be rent, it could be food. But we have a very generous community that constantly gives large amounts, small amounts, but it's never-ending. And I always, I'm always shocked, but we just have a very generous community and they're very, we're very good to each other. And it's really awesome thing to be part of that. So, you know, just for everyone to know that we are there for our community because you guys are there for the community and helping out. And we can help people with pretty much anything. And this is just a small part of it, but it's an important part. So we'd like to present the check to Musia.
On behalf of all of us, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is our presentation on the progress towards meeting district academic goals. Dr. Kates?
Each year, we set academic goals for the district. And they cover a broad range of measures and facets of student progress and readiness toward whatever might follow after high school. Tonight, we're very pleased to have our principals with us. I'm going to let Dr. Small introduce the panel to us. We're very pleased to have the presentation. There's a comprehensive report in the board materials. And then also, the presentation is also available. Dr. Small.
Thank you, Dr. Kates. Tonight, I'm pleased to have us joined by our core leadership team responsible for our progress on these district academic goals. We have Kurt Tenepur, the Principal of Fremd High School, Julie Novak, Principal of Conant High School, Josh Schumaker, Principal of Hoffman Estates High School, Danielle Howser, Director of Instructional Improvement, Gary Steiger, Principal of Palatine High School, and Tim Little, Principal of Schaumburg High School. In the fall of 2016, we presented a five-year plan for our 10 district goals. During this time that we presented these 10 goals, the state was in a state of flux, so to speak, as they changed over from their multiple measures for evaluating schools to what the ESA Plan for the federal government, Every Student Succeeds Act, was going to involve in terms of the accountability piece. When we presented last winter on the state's plan to the federal government for the ESA Plan, I am pleased to say that the state followed our pattern of looking at multiple ways to look at student success and to ensure that we are preparing our students for their future as they leave us. Your board write-up, as Dr. Kates mentioned, has the details behind each one of these 10 goals, our progress from year to year from the district level, as well as all of our subgroups, including demographics and our free and reduced lunch students. Tonight, what we're going to share with our principals and Dr. Howser is some of the successes at the school level and some of the interventions, as well as some of the opportunities that our schools do individually to meet the individual needs of our students. Our first goal is probably our lowest threshold goal. And this is that our students will graduate with a diploma within four years. The four years obviously represents the four years plus the summer. And within this diploma, our hope is that not only have they prepared themselves for whatever their next step is, but if their next step is college, they're ready to go into credit-bearing college classes. If their next step is a career, they have already developed some type of certification or coursework that prepares them out of an entry-level job. And they've all done some type of career exploration. So they have an idea of what they like, what they don't like, and what they might want to pursue after they leave us.
Thank you, Dr. Small. Along with educators from each of our District 211 schools, the Hoffman Estates High School staff has worked extensively to increase the number of students graduating our schools within four years. As you see from the five-year trend data in front of you, 98% of students who attend Hoffman Estates High School graduate within four years. Over the past two years, we have researched, implemented, and refined several strategies that have been effective in raising our graduation rates for all subgroups between 5 to 10 percentage points. These efforts have been grounded in two unique but functional rallying cries. The first, "Even One F," and the second, "Make It Happen." These rallying cries accrip us with strategies and propel us forward in supporting our student's success. While I could elaborate with more statistical data tonight, I realize that you're going to hear and see a myriad of numbers throughout this presentation. I often have to remind myself that behind each one of these numbers is a student, an individual with a story. And tonight, I would like to share Antonio's story with you. Understanding the importance of ensuring that all students who enter our doors graduate with their diploma within four years, we have designed and implemented a multi-tiered systematic plan of identification, intervention, and personalization for students at risk of not graduating. The first stage was early identification of students who struggle. Our staff utilized increased access to student performance data and developed metrics to help us organize our collective efforts. Our rallying cry became "Even One F," because "Even One F" on the transcript of our students puts them in danger of not graduating on time. Once identified as a possible risk, we implemented multiple systems of support, including our tiered academic intervention system, three-week grade checkpoints, and most importantly, made sure that every student had a trusted adult staff member who could act as an advocate. If these school-wide systems did not effectively support a struggling student, we created a personalized learning environment, or as our staff would say, "We got creative." At this stage, our rallying cry became "Make It Happen." This meant that we would utilize every option at our disposal, including summer school, credit recovery, or alternative school options to make it happen for every one of our students. Of course, our biggest asset was our staff and the relationships that they are able to form with our students. I want to share with you a quick story of the impact a staff member can have on a student. Many of you have participated in our graduation ceremony and know that it is a very formal event. What you may not know is that we practice the entire ceremony during the morning of graduation day. We do the processional, we do the ceremony, we do the recessional. Each student walks across the stage that morning and shakes my hand. As you can imagine, the practice is much less formal than the actual ceremony. It does give me the chance to interact with each student, with each graduate, on a personal level before they walk across that night. At our practice last May, a particular student named Antonio came across the stage to shake my hand with the usual grin on his face. Antonio and I knew each other well, mostly because he seemed to get into several major discipline infractions throughout the course of his career with us. As I went to shake Antonio's hand, I said to him, "I'm so glad you are graduating." He grinned and replied, "I bet you are." He started to walk the rest of the way across the stage, took two steps, turned back, and he said, he looked at me and he said, "Seriously, though, the only reason I'm here today is because of Mrs. Verdunk." As I shared the story with Mrs. Verdunk the next day, I was shocked to find out the rest of Antonio's story. As it turned out, Antonio had transferred to Hoffman Estates High School during his junior year with only 6.75 credits earned. He had already attended four high schools during his first two years and because of that, had not even tried to connect or build a relationship with any adults at our school. Mrs. Verdunk was assigned to be his case manager and immediately applied our "Make It Happen" rallying cry. She formed a relationship with Antonio, got creative with his schedule, somehow got him to pass his classes, and even got him to enroll and pass summer school. His story represents both the process and the heart from which we applied each student in order to ensure their success.
We're in our second year of administering the SAT as our state-required test. There are two major subgroups on the SAT, or subtests, I should say. And that is the English portion, which is called the Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, as well as the Mathematics portion. There are two aspects in preparing for a test such as the SAT. One is that you have the prior knowledge in order to actually engage in the questions of the test. And that prior knowledge comes from the development of our coursework to ensure that the students have what they need to be successful. And the second aspect of it is actually preparing for the test in terms of understanding how they're going to ask you questions, practicing the questions. And this is typically known as test prep. So we work on both aspects in terms of making sure that our students are prepared and ready to be successful on that test.
At Fremd, our focus on the SAT, which is now the state-sponsored test, hinges on three things: test familiarity for both teachers and students, course content that has a connection to the SAT standards, and a strong thorough SAT prep program that's accessible to all students. So when the state switched to the SAT, District 211 deployed the required resources to make sure that our teachers and students would be ready for the transition. Through summer curriculum work, time grants, department meetings, teachers dug into the SAT to learn how it scored, what it covers, and where our curriculum needed to be adjusted to better cover the test content. These professional development experiences bolstered our teachers' test familiarity and allowed them to redesign the curriculum to better address SAT standards. Additionally, our test prep programs received a facelift. The transition was a perfect time to examine these practices. An area of improvement that we spotted immediately was the amount of time the math test prep occurred, and it was much greater than what we had in English. So that was an easy one for us to take a look at here. And Dorothy Kohler, who is our English test prep person, agreed that we needed to bolster that so much more. So she dived in, checked out the schedule, and not only offered more sessions, but she promoted them much more heavily. And so we saw more students attend, and we saw more students attend more frequently. And I think that that is what gave much of our rise here.
Thanks, Mr. Tenepure. Talk a little bit about the percentage of Schaumburg High School students meeting math SAT benchmarks. And there's three things that our math department did that helped with our scores and helped with our students. The first was embedding more SAT-style critical thinking questions into the curriculum. It's really looking at the 117, 217, 317 track. And what these questions entailed, it's really kind of mirrored the SAT. So they're looking numerically, algebraically, graphically, and verbally, which really kind of mirrored that SAT. The second thing that our math department did was utilize the STAR Lab, which is an acronym for Students Targeting Assessment Readiness. It's Room 5 at Schaumburg, if you've been there. And our STAR Lab really works and develops test prep with the Khan Academy. And each kid has an account there with the Khan Academy and works through it. So not only they know what they can do well on the SAT, it really goes after and targets the weaknesses. So our math department targeted in the beginning of the year the 300, 400-level courses and then really honed in on 317 second semester in that STAR Lab. These kids were very successful in that lab. And then finally, one of the things that really was helpful and that Kurt mentioned is really a familiarity with the test. So the students were really taught how to build points when they take the SAT. How you chunk that and how do you, you don't, you know, by chunking, you don't get so overwhelmed. But it's really a strategy on how you can, you know, do well on that particular portion. It's a strategy. I want to talk to you a little bit about a student, Tom, who, a math teacher came to Matt Grushka, Department Chair, and this student was in 314. And at semester, after talking with Tom and his parents, Mr. Grushka wanted to challenge him a little more, pushed him up into the 317, which was the focus of our second semester work. One of the neat things that Tom did second semester was that he utilized the three things that we did. He hit 530 on the SAT. That's pretty impressive coming from where he was at. It was a lot of work for him, was a difficult transition, but he scored very well on it. It's big for him because he can enroll in dual-credit course, the M435 with Harper. And it also means that that's a great college readiness score for him for a four-year university.
The goal that focuses on our critical learning standards looks at the success of each student and their ability to demonstrate their success within these standards. As a reminder, our critical learning standards are the guiding objectives for each one of our course. It is what maintains the integrity between teacher and teacher and school and school for every single one of our courses. That integrity is also enhanced by our issuance of the District Benchmark Assessment, which we usually label as the DBA. And it is the DBA that we gain the results from that show us how our students are progressing on our critical learning standards.
As Dr. Small said, the critical learning standards define what students should be able to know and do by the end of the course. The critical learning standards are then assessed on the DBA either at the end of each semester or at the end of the year. On the screen is a chart listing, for example, the critical learning standards for E402 English Literature. This is a senior-level course. And next to each one of the standards, on the right-hand side, you know, the teachers will take a look at the percent proficient. And we have one of these charts for all of our courses that our teachers review as a focus on our morning work sessions. And from here, then, they can also compare across schools, across demographic groups. But when the PLT sits down, they're immediately, they're drawn to the two boxes in yellow. And those stand out, telling the teachers, "Less than 70% of the students last year were proficient on the standard. We need to do something this year. We need to get more students to be proficient." So at that point, department members will start looking at their instructional strategies, their assessments, their curricular alignment, and how things are taught, their sequencing from unit to unit. And they will start making any changes and implementing those immediately for next year. So come Institute Day on fall, this will be a starting point for English Literature, and they'll map out the rest of the year on how to make those instructional improvements for the upcoming school year. Again, they work collaboratively. This is not something teachers do in isolation. It's something they do together during that time, which is why it's appreciative that they have that time so they can share. And what is also a benefit to having the same standards across the district is as those teachers meet and make changes during the morning work sessions, even though they might be meeting at Palatine, then information gets shared with all other schools, including Higgins and North Campus, so that those changes can be implemented across the district and benefit all students.
Our next series of goals deal with the rigor that we present to our students and the supports we put in place in order for them to be successful. You've heard many times us speak about the benefits of our advanced placement and our dual-credit courses. These rigorous challenges are tied to the opportunities that our students, or that our schools provide to our students in order for them to be successful. And even though we speak to it quite frequently, I'd like to take the time to slow down and think about what we're actually challenging our students to do. This is a college-level course with a college-level text, college-level expectations, and it carries college-level credit. It is not easy for a high school student to engage in either a dual-credit course or an AP course. And so what's really important that you're going to hear from our principals through all of our goals is the supports we put in place in order for our students to be successful and then gain the opportunities because they've been successful in these rigorous courses and know that they have the confidence to be challenged and meet those challenges in the future.
Last year, we talked about sticking our necks out to support students and having more access to AP and dual-credit coursework. It's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to do it, and perhaps another thing to do it well. For the class of 2018, 89% of graduating students at Conant participated in either an AP or dual-credit course. Increasing in enrollment in these classes is, in many ways, the easy part. It's not too difficult to convince a student or his or her parents that increased rigor and the opportunity for college credit are good things. Maintaining enrollment in these classes requires establishing a sense of belonging for students. As administrators, we learn the importance of anticipating and providing a system of supports that were timely and that uncovered what I would call the hidden rules of AP. For example, first-time students learned that there are patterns to AP classes that can be overwhelming without adequate planning. Learning to balance the amount of reading and writing required along with realizing that asking for help is a good thing were areas that we needed to develop. Many students begin to realize the difference in rigor just after the first exam. Helping students understand that an AP test are part of the formative process was another thing that we needed to work on. Helping them understand that it's not uncommon for even a very high-level student to earn perhaps a 66% the first time they take an exam in AP was something that we had to work on with our first timers. I remember meeting with Sylvia after her first AP history test. In tears, she wanted, she shared with me that she wanted to drop the class, not because of her interest or engagement in the class or not feeling like she didn't belong, but because she performed poorly on the first exam. When I shared with her that that wasn't at all uncommon and we talked about developing a plan to, for, you know, reading and writing and knowing that she really did have control over this as she planned and organized her day, she chose to stay with the class. She did end the class with a weighted B, and that's another area helping students even understand that their grade is a weighted grade, something that's sometimes a new concept for them. And she also took the AP exam and earned a 3 on that exam, which was a great accomplishment for her. Something else we knew at Conant but didn't really fully realize the importance of was that most of our students in AP develop a natural system of supporting one another. They do this through group chats, through virtual study sessions, and those occur often in the evening, sometimes late into the evening. Working with our first-time students to tap into those discussions and help them kind of navigate how to tap into those discussions was something else that we needed to do. One area to highlight, and I would agree with what Lisa said, you almost have to stop and really think about it, is when you look at our curriculum, we are at a point where in nearly every department, there is a pathway to AP or dual-credit for students. This creates great opportunities for our students, but it also enriches and strengthens our community. A few weeks ago, Shayna Adelman, one of our Applied Technologies teachers, shared with me her experience of taking her brand-new baby to her first pediatrician's appointment at Arlington Pediatrics. Shayna shared that the CNA was one of our graduates who earned her certificate through us. Moreover, the doctor's intern was one of our students who was participating in a summer internship that was also crafted by our district. To me, this is the fulfillment of why we invest in both dual-credit and AP opportunities for our students.
Similar to Conant High School, our focus on preparing students for life after high school includes increasing enrollment in the classes that provide opportunities to earn college credit. As you can see from the graph in front of you, our staff has been successful in raising the percentage of students who enroll in an advanced placement or dual-credit course over 14% in the last two years, represented by a 9% increase last year and another 5% increase this year. The graph showed great success towards this goal. When I stop, as Dr. Small and Mrs. Novak have shared, and reflect that 85% of our class of 2018 participated in this rigorous coursework, I am so encouraged to consider how these experiences set them up for success at their next level. Late last year, we took time to reflect as a staff on exactly how we have accomplished this growth and how we can continue it. One of our teachers, a 20-year veteran of the Social Studies Department, shared that he believes much of the growth was a result of a change in our mindset. He went on to share that when he started teaching, there used to be the mindset that advanced placement and dual-credit courses were only for a select group of students. But that the mindset of both our staff and our students has changed to one that views these courses as opportunities that are available for everyone. In fact, we've continued to work to upgrade our mindset that taking these courses isn't just an opportunity for students, but rather, it's an expectation for all students. Through the expansion of our advanced placement and dual-credit opportunities, we have the full resources available to support all students to fulfill that expectation. Shortly after this staff meeting, in which we discussed our mindset shift, I had the opportunity to sit in on a scheduling meeting between a counselor and a student. This is the meeting during which the student chooses their classes for the next school year. I think that it's worthy to note and share with you tonight that the counselor did not ask the student whether they planned to take an AP or a dual-credit course, but rather, they simply asked which one she planned to take next year. This expectation and the mindset that underlies it is part of the foundation of high academic expectations for all students.
As was mentioned, enrollment in rigorous courses, one thing. This goal takes it one step further. And this is looking at how many of our graduates graduate with at least 15 college credits, whether it be through dual-credit or AP. As with our previous goal, the enrollment gains them the confidence, the practice, the know-how of what they can do in the future. This early college credit, when you get to 15 credits, not only saves them money, saves them time, earns them industry credentials, and also increases their chances of graduating from college on time and entering into a job that's higher than an entry-level position.
I don't know that I like to admit this, but several years ago, when Dr. Kates first mentioned a goal of all students earning 15 college credits prior to graduation, I wondered if he was feeling okay. It seemed to me like a goal that, like, this was a great goal for some students that maybe our highest-achieving students could attain, but maybe not a goal for all. Now, it's entirely reasonable to expect that all students can achieve this truly remarkable goal. This summer, I had the opportunity to be a part of college freshman orientations for my twins who graduated from Fremd last year. I imagine it was a surprise for some Conant graduates who were also at those presentations to see their principal there. I hope they didn't think I was following them to college. When it came time for the registration sessions, it was an awesome experience to see my kids and my Conant kids be able to just cross classes. be able to just cross classes off the list in terms of what they had to register for. And I really think that this was the moment when that reality set in for so many students and their parents who can calculate a savings of anywhere from three hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for each credit earned. The cost savings is a great benefit, but the reassurance that our students are prepared to experience the rigor required for college is perhaps the biggest benefit of this goal.
You heard me speak earlier about our efforts to ensure that all Hoffman Estates High School students enroll in AP or dual credit courses. I want to expand our earlier conversation and explains, and explain the work that happens after enrollment in that first initial course. Similar to Conant High School, we have increased the percentage of students who earn at least fifteen college credits, often equal to one semester of college prior to graduation. We typically find that students can earn fifteen college credits by taking five AP or dual credit courses with us. As you can see from the chart projected in front of you, our Hispanic student subgroup has the highest percentage of students who earn fifteen or more college credits at Hoffman Estates High School. We are, we were able to raise this percentage from sixteen percent the prior year due to the work in part of the educators who were involved in the Project Excel program. The mission of this program is to support students of color and increase academic skills while fostering resiliency specifically towards accelerated and advanced placement coursework. One of my favorite graduates from last year is a female student named Saomi. I met Saomi during her sophomore year when she decided to try an AP class for the first time. According to her teacher at the time, she was timid, unsure of herself, and rarely participated in the class discussions. During her junior year, I asked her to serve on a panel of students to describe to our staff what it was like to walk into an AP class for the first time. I still remember how her quiet voice wavered as she shared with a roomful of adults that she didn't feel like she belonged in an AP class that first day. She went on to explain that part of her feeling was from her own insecurity, but part was because many of the other students in the class didn't look like her, talk like her, or have the same home life or experiences as her. It was a powerful message for our staff to hear. Later during the presentation, she shared that the only reason that she stayed in the course was because her Project Excel mentors and staff members were there to listen to her, to encourage her, and to provide her with the skills and strategies to not only make it through that first course, but to thrive in the rigorous environment. She went on to take six more AP classes after her original experience during her sophomore year. I share with you this story tonight because Saomi is one of the twenty-six percent of the Hispanic students represented on this chart that earned over fifteen college credits during her time with us at Hoffman.
Students who begin in developmental math or English courses freshman year will advance to regular or co-taught courses prior to graduation. This is a way to look at rigor from a different perspective. Our students who start in our developmental English or math courses can be a range of students, whether they, they just be placed in there as they come to our high schools, whether they have an IEP, or whether they're English language learners. But when we look at rigor for these students, we look at where they are and what opportunities and interventions can we put in place so that by the time they leave us, they have moved into an, a regular track or a co-taught regular track with supports and are successful at that level.
Everyone has strengths and areas of growth. One of the biggest challenges in working with adolescents is to not allow them to define themselves by their weaknesses. Starting in first grade, students begin to recognize where they fit. Are they in the high group or the low group? Are they fast or slow? Will they get picked first or last? Fast forward to high school and imagine the psyche of the student who's been in the low group for math or in any area since early elementary. We know that for our students to thrive in post-secondary careers or training, a certain level of math attainment is critical. This is why we focus on helping students who have most likely been in the developmental group all along advance to correct, regular and co-taught classes. Additional supports for these students are critical for the development of skills, but helping students to define themselves as math students is perhaps the biggest challenge. In order to achieve this, we rely on several programs, including classes that are double periods, classes that loop, offering the same teacher for all four years, push-in supports of teacher assistance along with tutorial supports in summer school to help those, to help close the gap for students who significantly struggle in math. Four years ago at Conant, we asked students who require developmental math support and don't like math to double down and take not just one period of math, but two. Mr. Malone and Mr. Fievelson taught these groups of students in the general education math sequence for all four years of high school. Over the four years, Mr. Malone and Mr. Fievelson described their classes as like family to them. This is what it takes and this is what we attribute to our growth in this area.
It's interesting that the state has defined the SAT as the college-ready test, but they ask us to give it to our students junior year before high school is even over. So this goal focuses on senior year. So for our students who are not quite ready with the coursework yet by junior year, we don't stop and drop and say, okay, we're done. We look for opportunities for them senior year to ensure that when they graduate, they are ready to go into a credit-bearing college course, whether it be in English or math. It's very discouraging for a student to graduate from high school, to go to college, and then to have to enroll in courses that they pay for, they put the time in, but they do not get any credit towards their diploma for. So within this goal, we're looking to ensure that when our students leave us after taking these courses, they do get into credit-bearing classes within our, their next year in college.
So you've heard a lot about us accelerating students and the power of fifteen and talking about saving students money. There is, Dr. Small just described, when a student, if they enter Harper and they have to take these remediation classes, as she said, they're spending money for nothing to get them caught up. Research also, not only supports the power of fifteen, it also, on the other side, suggests that a student that's in a remedial class in college is less likely to complete their coursework. And unfortunately, we do have students that wind up in our developmental classes and haven't quite worked their way out by junior or senior year, or they start in our ESL program or our general studies program and they haven't made it yet. Well luckily, we've been able to work closely, our teachers have been able to work closely with Harper College to create this introduction to rhetoric class where students focus on skill-building in the reading and the writing arena. And more importantly, they focus on efficacy and self-efficacy and confidence building, where these students now become competent in their writing skills and their reading skills. And you know, I was, it was, I was looking for a student to share with you. But as I looked at our class lists as our two different courses, I couldn't find a student because they all had a story. They started out in our ESL program and worked their way up into our English two oh one class or three oh one class. They weren't quite there. They didn't hit the mark for their SAT scores. But they took the rhetoric course, and by taking the rhetoric course, they were guaranteed placement in E one oh one at Harper. And why is that significant? Some of these students may not be four-year university students. They may be students that go into our career in technical education, but if you want to get an HVAC certificate over at Harper, you still have to take English one oh one. It's a required part of that program. So these students get to start there. And early on results, we've had reports from the professors at Harper. Our students that go through our rhetoric class at our District Two Eleven schools perform better than the students that go through Harper's rhetoric class and wind up in the E one oh one class with them. So again, it's a great opportunity due to the hard work and dedication of our staff.
I just want to echo what Gary was talking about there with the relationship between District Two Eleven and Harper College. And I think that Lisa and Danielle play a, a major role in creating that strong relationship. Because of the work that they've done, Harper now has the confidence in our teachers that we will provide a rigorous experience for our students. And you see that as well in the math program. So what you see on the slide in front of you is the percentage of students who met the prerequisite to enter a credit-bearing class at Harper. So in math, if a student doesn't meet a certain level, they would go into a, a class that they would pay for and not get credit towards their degree before they would move on to the credit-bearing ones. And so at Fremd, what we have here is within our M three fourteen program, which is the, the precursor to four fourteen, our teachers have done a really good job to prepare those students. Consequently then, what you're seeing here, when you look in the school year seventeen and eighteen is a reduced number in that trend line because they're able to push more students who will bypass four fourteen altogether and go into four thirty-five, which is a dual-credit class. And then those who are left in four fourteen, it's a little bit tighter skillset so the teachers are able to focus on them a little bit more. So that's part of the success story that we have with our M four fourteen program. Angie Johnson, math teacher at Fremd, she shared with me that through that class, they also use a program called Math Excel. And while there is mixed results sometimes with having a, a computer program be part of the supplemental instructional program in a classroom, Math Excel, for many of these students, she pointed out, was the first time that they were ever successful on a math class. She talked about this kid named Oscar who, he got his first test back and he's like, that's the best grade I've ever gotten. And then, and it's the highest grade he's ever gotten in a, in a math class by the end of the year. And part of that has to do with Math Excel, but I think the other piece of that is, is how the teachers in that sequence of courses have pushed these students toward that goal of being able to pass the class of M four fourteen.
Participation in at least one or more district activity groups or athletic teams each year takes us beyond just looking at what's happening in the classroom. We offer more than a hundred opportunities at each one of our schools when we combine the athletic and activity opportunities that we provide for our students. It is a way for our students to connect outside the classroom, and that is extremely important. We see a higher success rate of our students within the classroom when they have that enriched connection outside. So not only are they connecting to more adult mentors, they're connecting to more peers who may have a like interest. They learn more time management, and they also get to focus on some of those soft skills that are going to help them, whether it be in the classroom or whatever their next steps are outside of, of high school.
Thanks, Dr. Small. I'm going to share with you the percentage of Schaumburg students participating in at least one or more activity or athletic teams in the year. And there's three things I think that we did that really kind of enhanced our participation in activities and athletics. The first one is an activity showcase that we, that was new. We put it on for the first time in the first week of school. And we had over three hundred students that came and, that attended that showcase where sponsors showed up and we held it on the shelf. The kids loved it. So we got a, you know, kind of an increased participation from that. The second thing we did was a, it's called a coach-sponsor reach-out. So our athletic director, Mr. Manning, and our activities director, Mrs. Napier, they sent out a list of every student that was not a, a part of a sport or activity so the coach or sponsor could reach out to them via email or in person. And then the third thing, Mr. Manning instituted a multi-sport recognition program where he recognized student athletes that participated in more than one season. He did that in, in our team recognitions and students that did that got a, got a shirt, a T-shirt. So a lot of kids want to get that T-shirt now, so it was very popular. I want to talk about Crislin Cardoza and Edwin Suresh. These should be two familiar names to you, the two Saxons that have stood before you this past year, graduating seniors. Edwin was our senior speaker. I think they would tell you that beginning of their freshman year when they came to Schaumburg, they were clueless about what they wanted to participate in. And it was just the fact that they got involved with their friends and started signing up for things. And, and I want to tell you a little bit about Edwin's accomplishments because it kind of says it all. He was on the state chess team, state math team, speech team, Scholastic Bowl, and both state and national business professional of America and was a multi-sport athlete. Edwin was busy. He also, because of these accomplishments, both extracurricular and academic, he was, excuse me, named to the IHSA All Academic Team, which is a, is a great honor. Crislin Cardoza, I think if she looked back on her four years, she was the editor of the school newspaper, served on the executive board of student council, co-president of National Honors Society, and competed on the state math team. She was also a student athlete. Crislin was named to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Daily Herald Leadership Team. So two seniors who came in their freshman year and just decided to get involved. Thanks.
An additional state-required test is our access test. We give it to all of our English language learners, no matter what level they are. And obviously, our students come in, some of them who cannot speak any English at all, all the way up to our students who are in their last ESL class and ready to go into a regular-level English class. No matter what level they speak, they all take an access test. The, the test is leveled depending on what level they are as a speaker. But there's two ways we measure this. They get measured by growth and they get measured by proficiency. And when we measure by proficiency, that's when the state says they have reached a certain score and they should be exited out of that coursework.
Well, you may look at this data and say, whoops, what happened? All of a sudden, we dropped down to that six percent. Well, there was kind of an anomaly last year. The state and we'd have changed the cut score there and everything else like that. And it would have been really easy for our staff to just kind of say, oh, well. Instead, they kind of took it as a kick in the teeth. Like, this was motivation. And they worked their fannies off over the summer, looking at our curriculum, looking at our instruction, going to workshops, doing all the research to see what had changed and what is it that we need to do to do better for our students. And as you can see in our first year, we, we made growth, six percent growth of, of more students meeting that proficiency standard. The story behind the story though is as you look at some of the individual sub-tests, you'll see that we had, we had some areas where our growth was as much as twenty percent to jump in. Students that met the growth standard of point five or met the exit standard, the perfect score on that of six, I believe, is what they, they have. And ESL, what our goal is, as soon as a student reaches us, is to actually move them out of ESL. We want to keep them in our ESL program for as little time as possible and move them into our regular college-credit, English-college-track English classes. And we have some great success stories. Christina is one of them, who actually was born here and as a very young child, about three years old, moved back home to Mexico. And she was there for quite a few years, actually came back to us, I believe, her sophomore year of high school or freshman year of high school, and so started again in our ESL program. Had that, that going in, in, in her. As she moved through the ranks, she graduated this year with three AP courses under her belt, starting as an ESL student. So again, just because a student starts there, doesn't mean that's their final destination. We do our best to, as you heard all night, to accelerate those students, to get them in the most rigorous classes we can. And Christina is a great example of that.
And finally, our tenth goal, the development of our college major and career clusters. You've heard me present multiple times on our industry meetings, our conversations between our faculty and those industry leaders, making sure that our curriculum is developed, making sure that we're offering opportunities for our students. So this particular year, we finished off our last eight of the sixteen clusters for the first round of those meetings. And then what will happen is the futures, we will go on a rotational cycle where we continue to meet with these leaders every three years to bring them in and ensure that we are staying up to date with our coursework and the needs and the expectations from the local industry in terms of preparation. Just as a reminder, within these sixteen clusters and the pathways, the whole purpose of it is to get students thinking, exploring, and talking about it. It is not about them committing to something and being forced and pigeonholed into an arena. But what we'd like students to say is, I'm exploring marketing. And then to be able to say, I've taken a course in it, I've gone on a career track, I've had a guest speaker, and now I know I'm more interested to continue, or that's not something I thought it was and I'm ready to try a different arena. And that's what the college majors and career clusters is really all about. We want our kids to be ready to, when they leave us, whether it be through their experiences of their coursework, their guest speakers, the internships, their jobs, whatever it is, they have the opportunity to say, when they're eighteen and leave us, this is what I like, this is what I don't like. And changing your mind's okay, but sitting back and just picking courses and just getting a diploma is not enough. It's exploring along the way to see what will happen. So in terms of our goals, I have been looking at district data for the past fourteen years. And I can honestly say I have never seen such an increase across all subgroups, across all goals. It has been a tremendous effort put forth by our principals and our school leaders and our teachers to really look at our practices and to come up with new opportunities for our students so that they can do better. One of the aspects of the discussion tonight that I wanted to bring forth is we talk a lot about college and career preparation. And we don't segregate our students. We don't ask freshmen, are you going to college or are you going straight into career? Our job is to prepare them so that when they're eighteen and graduate, they can go wherever they want to go. want to go. If they decide they're going straight into career, they've had coursework and earned a certification that will get them into that career and above an entry-level job. If they decide to go into college, they are prepared for that college experience because of the rigorous coursework, or we set them up with coursework so they go straight into college-bearing classes. It's important to realize that we realize that not every kid is deciding to go to college at 18, but we also know when they're 14, 15, 16, their mindset and their opportunities are very different from when they are when they're 18 and they're seniors and they're ready to go. And we want to make sure we've given them every opportunity along the way so when that decision is made when they leave us, they're ready, no matter what it may be. So we will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I do. I know that the basis was the academic goals in the presentation, and I truly appreciate that. And given the human services background that I come from, I can't help but think about, you know, what kind of mental health success have we had for our students? And I do have to compliment you because that was my first thought at the beginning, but as you made the description of the students, I can hear it, you're offering the mentors, reminding the students that they need to ask for help, that that's okay. The expectation of all students, and I liked, you know, the doubling down on the math class because I think it's just really important that we have that web of support. And that sounds like what you're giving these kids, which is just phenomenal because you need more than one person to be there in case that kid falls through. So I just think that what you're doing is tremendous. I think the academics are showing. I think our social-emotional learning is important. I think making sure that the mental health of our students is important. And supporting their families is also important. And I've heard that throughout. So I thank you and thank you to the staff at each of the schools. And, you know, we need to continue to do that because our students are going through a lot of things right now, and anxiety and depression, you know, fall in real easily for our young people. So again, thank you for an excellent presentation and for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. That's really good information. This will bring us to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchah?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. This brings us to our special reports. The Freedom of Information Act requests are in front of us. Any questions or comments?
Graduation dates for the class of 2019, also for our information, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. As I brought to Dr. Kate's attention in November, when the last school calendar was presented for approvals, I again request that all scheduling of school activities, including extracurricular, clubs, concerts, rehearsals, shows, sports, picture days, and academic testing, just to name a few, are not scheduled in direct conflict with dates where students, staff, and their families are forced to choose between religious obligations and observations and school programs. If it is absolutely unavoidable, then students who may choose to partake in their religious obligations should not be required to complete additional homework or other such assignments to make up for this if it is a class-credit-worthy program such as choir or band. To aid in teachers and administrators knowing what dates are in need of consideration when scheduling, I again offer, myself, to partner with someone from the school district administration staff to check either online or directly with local religious institutional leadership and determine which and when such holidays of such importance to the various faiths our students and staff may affiliate with in our community. This can then be communicated to the school administrators to ensure such conflicts do not arise as they have in the past. Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? I guess, are you referring to the entire school calendar or the graduation dates that were presented in general?
So the, it's not the school calendar that's being presented tonight?
Correct.
But it's what comes underneath and within each school's programs.
Okay. So is this something as a board we want to discuss? I mean, as we all know that it's a collection of the boards' will to bring a topic like this, and if this is so, then would be another, under potential topics for discussion?
I think you already asked the question, but just for clarity, since we're talking about graduation dates, is there a graduation date that is of concern to you?
It's regarding graduation date and the school schedule itself. So in looking at the graduation dates specifically that are being presented tonight, I'm not aware of any conflicts. But I encourage investigation or a little research to make sure that it doesn't.
Is that research something that is being done, or?
Yes, we commonly make adjustments to schedule events surrounding a variety of different holidays. For instance, sort of a standout item is that football games are often moved to a Thursday instead of a Friday when that might cross over to a holiday. That's probably the most common example. So, you know, we have calendar people who've been mindful each year, and we are mindful of those around the parameters of the holiday. But I don't know if there's another specific component, and we've had a couple of conversations about it.
Is it the districts? I was going to say, is it the districts' practice to require extra work or some of the things that were possibly suggested on a conflict if a student was to come to either a coach, a sponsor, a teacher with that request?
So the term of extra work, I think, is, in my opinion, would not be accurate. What I can say is that we freely excuse staff members without any penalty. It is not credited as a personal day or a vacation day. It is granted as a, you know, as a day that we clear for them. So there is no bias or failure to accommodate that. And my understanding is that's similar for students as well.
That's not, that's not correct from a student perspective. If a student were to miss a choir concert, for instance, or a band concert, for instance, because of a religious obligation that they chose to observe, they have been required, I know for a fact, to do an extra assignment because they missed that school activity.
To do an assignment in place of the assignment?
In place of the concert.
So in place of, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So they would do X number of assignments surrounding a non-religious event and X...
Almost like a home, an extra homework assignment because they missed that particular activity for that credit-worthy class.
But it would seem to me that one could view that as doing the same amount of work as another student. It's just that they did it at a different time.
It's a different kind of work, though. For, I'll give an example. For choir, they're still attending all the rehearsals with everyone else in order to perform that one evening, but instead, maybe there's a religious obligation that same evening that they personally felt was more important for them to take advantage of and observe and attend or what have you. And then they have to, in turn, write a paper or something like that instead of attending that concert.
How about we sit down this coming week and we can go through the calendar and make sure that we don't have any potential known conflicts and those that, you know, we can check to see the possibility of that before we make any decisions, but we can at least review the prospects of what might be crossovers there.
Okay. Again, it's more maybe making a list of those and then communicating it to the various school administrators so when they're making their local decisions.
Well, again, yeah, so we would be interested to receive information, but I'll let the board speak for the board.
I was going to say, I think there's a multitude, I think, information in what is our building's practices on those scenarios, when, if it's same work, extra work, or what is just the policy on that, or procedure, I should say. Not specifically to this example, but in generalities.
Sure.
I don't think I need more than that right now. Anyone else?
I think you're right. I think it needs to go to the administration and take a look at that because possibly, you know, each school maybe does things a little bit differently. And I think, you know, listening to what Mr. Rosenbloom had said, just to make certain that a student doesn't get dacked their grade, or the grade doesn't decrease because of them, you know, participating in.
And also, I mean, if we want to discuss this, which I'm happy to, then we should put it on the agenda because the agenda item is graduation dates, which is why I asked, does this relate specifically to a graduation date?
It's related to graduation dates and the first item under new business.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we've kind of, we've brought it, we'll get some preliminaries, and if we need to go deeper, we will add it to an agenda at another time. And typically, this would be, you know, potential topic for discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We also have our Community Connections newsletter, Strategic Plan Update for information. Any questions or just skip one?
Do we need to vote on the graduation dates?
No, they're for our information.
Okay.
The Community Connections Strategic Plan Update, questions or comments? Okay. This brings us to our new business, which is the 2020-21 School Calendar and Summer School Calendar for 2021. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the school calendar for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the summer school calendar for the summer of 2021.
So moved.
God bless.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have our GPS for Transportation Department as our next item. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the GPS solution for its fleet of 163 buses from Tyler Technologies for a total cost of $118,212.50 for the 2018-2019 school year, agrees to purchase the necessary services for the total cost of $54,864 for the 2019-2020 school year, and approves future yearly expenses to provide the GPS system at a cost increase not to exceed 3% to 5% annually thereafter.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Sure.
In looking over the material that was provided to us, I have a question regarding, what happens if a unit, so the units have a one-year warranty and a life expectancy of five to seven years. What happens if a unit fails after the first-year warranty has expired? Are we then responsible for paying for the replacement?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a cost figure associated with the replacement?
The individual unit, so let me just share that if there is a failure to a piece of equipment, they do have a repair system. So you would disable the device, you send it in for repairs, and it, they overnight ship a new one out to you. We do have spare buses to where we would deploy one of those into our fleet while that repair is, or we are waiting for the new device, and that would be our first course. The actual, just pull out the individual cost per item. All right, this is very tiny here.
$60 each? Okay. That also answers a second question that I had with, what happens at the end of the five to seven-year life expectancy? Now I know we'd be buying some more units. Do we have a length of term for the overall contract? Or is it just it keeps renewing until we decide otherwise?
What we're suggesting is that the term within the motion, that we anticipate the increase to be somewhere between 3% to 5%, that we would continue to renew that, again, based on our review of the performance and, you know, services from the company.
So it's kind of open?
A renewing, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchah?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
We have our 2018-2019 Educational Research Development Legislative Renewal. Suggested motion is that the Board of Education renew its membership in EdRed for the 2018-2019 school year at a fee of $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchah?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. We have our National School Boards Association National Connections Fees. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the national connection fees of the National School Boards Association for a period of one year, beginning October 1st, 2018, at a cost of $5,335.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So when, what's, when's the last time we actually utilized the national connection as a resource?
I can't make a statement for what individual board members utilize or don't utilize. We review the information that's contained in there and various descriptions of legislative updates or federal changes. I couldn't speak for anyone else.
I read and review what comes through and try to stay abreast of nationally what's going on at school board level outside of our arena here in Illinois. When something becomes of over-interest, I would ask further questions. Mrs. Klinkowitz, do you have anything to add?
I think with the journal and them participating at the National School Board conferences, with the speakers that they're able to provide, I know that they have some different information that they send to us about legislation, some of the federal types of things. So I think, you know, it's an organization that I think we should continue participating because it's at the national level for.
But don't we get that through the Illinois Association? Aren't they abreast of what's going on nationally and then matriculate that information to us and apply what applies to Illinois locally from the national level? I mean, I'm not, I personally, in the last three, four years, haven't seen much benefit to what we do here on a day-to-day basis, but I'm open to hearing more and supportive.
I think with the, our state, they do more local and they do the local lobbying. I know they do have a lobbyist also who does work, you know, at the national level. And I suspect that part of, you know, her participating is information that she gives to national and that national shares and comes back via, you know, whether it's emails or some of the literature or the journal, that the American School Board Journal that we get with the write-ups in regards to it.
I just look at the fee of over $5,000. I'm not sure that's worth a journal subscription.
Well, it also gives us information of what's happening at other school districts across the country. It's just not, you know, the state one pretty much just covers our state. If somebody in Washington is doing something new and inventive, we should be able to get it from them.
But have we seen anything like that since we've been, I mean, that's why I'm asking. What have we implemented out of, that we've seen that might be worthwhile?
If you've ever gone to one of the seminar, you know, the national convention and attended seminars, you'll find different, you know, you'll meet other board members from other school districts across the country. you'll meet other board members from other school districts across the country.
And have we brought that back here and implemented anything? Like, well, I'm not just asking for an example.
It's been brought back.
What, what has?
Every, Mrs. Klunkiewicz has brought back every time. She's got back the conventions and she gives updates. This is one, in my opinion, this is one of those, um, things that it, this is a, when you use what resources for what as a school board member. And I think what you're asking is, do, do we bring anything back and actually implement it in District 211?
Is there value to what we're subscribed to? And I, I haven't seen any, I mean, I haven't seen anything that we've made a policy motion or implemented something at this level with regard to something that was initiated from the national level. Great, it's information, but I don't know if it's specific information that you can only get through this membership. I, I would imagine it's available openly.
I, I'm sure it is researchable. Um, the question at hand is, does the Board of Education find it a useful tool for us at a cost of $5,335?
Does the administration have any use or connection to this?
We review the materials as they come in. I can tell you that I, uh, receive the Journal and I go through the Journal to watch for what events are occurring in another districts. You know, it, it's, uh, helpful to keep abreast and, uh, the trends, while we may not implement something that looks exactly like another district, it's helpful to know what, uh, initiatives, what interests are arising. And then how we shape that here locally is what has been beneficial to us.
I guess if, if we're going to approve EdRed, then we should do this because this is, you know, for the school board, this is our organization that supports the school board. I know the EdRed also supports not just the school board. Um, and we have administrators that are, that are part of it and on that particular board.
See, I see EdRed differently. I see it as, we have access to a lobbyist where there is an organization that's working with legislators. I don't, I, I haven't seen the national scho-, I mean, we have IASB, which also has lobbyists and, and we, we go to the, the Triple I and we influence legislation that infects us directly here. But I, on the national level, I don't, I don't see the same benefit, interaction, implementation. And I, I would imagine that our IASB membership, uh, filters and then matriculates that information from the national level down to the state level and, and works with ISBE. And to me, this seems like a redundant fee.
Okay, so we have, we've heard multiple, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
Maybe we need to get involved, more involved at the national level, you know, with, with our school board. And, you know, taking a deeper look at what some of the national, um, issues are and see if that's something we want to get involved in legislatively. That's an option.
All right, any more, um, questions or comments? I have a roll-
Would there be other ways, Dr. Kates, that you would access information that you normally get here? And, you know, trying to keep abreast of what you tried to keep abreast of. I, I ask it for this reason. So, I tend to agree with Mr. Dombrowski. I once attended the national conference only because it was here in Chicago, so I didn't have to go somewhere else. However, when I left the conference, I immediately acknowledged I would never again go. And I, I didn't find it very productive and very helpful. Uh, you know, I do go through the materials that they send. However, my sense is that I feel like I have enough to digest just trying to keep track of what Dr. Kates brings in front of us here. And so to a large extent, if there's something occurring in the United States that's going to affect us here, I'm, my expectation is, Dr. Kates will tell me what I need to look at, at the time. But in the same sense, I, I, I don't get too hung up with the cost of this, especially if I know that Dr. Kates at least reads this material for some reason at all. So, you know, I'm and I'm critical of what I get from this, so, um.
Yes, we subscribe to other national information that we also receive nationally that, that, uh, is helpful as well. I couldn't give you a, I couldn't partial out for you the percent of impact. You know, all I will say is that I try to keep abreast, yes.
I acknowledge that.
Mr. LaFever, can I ask you a question? Did you go to the one in Chicago that was right after the New Orleans?
I couldn't even tell you. I think it, it only happened once. Did it ever happen again?
It was in Chicago, um, McCormick Place.
I'm pretty sure that was-
And that was a little bit of a chaotic because usually
Okay.
the national conferences rotate cities and it had to be, um, I think with, um, the hurricane in New Orleans and we couldn't go back to New Orleans the next year or something.
It's possible. And which way does this go? There's, you have to belong to one in order to be in the other. Which way is it? You have to be in Illinois in order to be in the national? Otherwise, you can't be in the national?
I believe you can be in national, but you pay a higher fee, I think. I might, I might be wrong on that.
Okay. There was some connection between the two. So there's some, I'm not sure which way it goes.
I think you have to belong to the, to the local one in order to be able to, to attend the national. So the state one, we need to belong to.
I think this is a very important question. Whether I would choose not to, you know, support this is, you know, if Dr. Kates had a, to see a serious opinion that, yeah, if we weren't in it, you know, I'd be interested to know that.
Yeah, and, and with as many school districts and as densely populated as we are, if something happens that's going to be in the NSBA, I'm sure 214 is going to be calling for us for our opinion and explaining what's going on, or, you know, other surrounding districts as well will be calling us saying, hey, what are you guys going to do about this? I mean, I, I doubt anything's going to sneak by in our area that's going to come out of that association.
Is this membership in NSBA? Or is this, or is this, because it, it says National Connections Fee. Is that the same as membership?
Yes, it is. And this is for the national. Uh, the board took action last month for the Illinois Association of School Boards. And, uh, so for the national.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Next, we have potential topics for future discussion. Next, we have our committee reports. We have Northwest Suburban Special Education Association, Organization. Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
I have nothing to report. We did not meet in July.
Okay. EdRed, Mr. Dombrowski?
No meeting set, I'm aware of.
Mrs. Hummel? Guys all tend to-
Just about ready to get the year started, so.
All right. And then, um, Mr. Young in Facilities.
Oh, yeah, everything's been going crazy across the district. I'll kind of give you an idea of what's going on at each school. At Hoffman Estates, a media cent, media center is underway and the rough, part of the rough framing is completed. And the anticipated, uh, completion of this will be in the wintertime. Uh, the parking lot and, at Hoffman is also being reconfigured to make it ea-, uh, easier and safer to drop students off. Uh, the tennis courts are completed and the roof, roof work is underway and should be completed in time. Coat in the washrooms are pretty much underway and they should be completed in time, too. Uh, the design offers better access as well as, uh, better supervision. The North Field projects, well, as long as we don't hit a rainy season, should be, uh, completed in times for the spring sports. Tennis courts are completed over there and the roof work is underway. Now, Schaumburg. Uh, the drainage system in the varsity football, uh, baseball field is completed. So the flooding, the problems that they had there should, should have stopped. The tennis courts are completed and they're being painted right at this moment, or not at this moment, but during the day. Uh, the new turf for the football, uh, field is in place. And instead of using, uh, uh, tire material that they've used in the past, they have a new EPM, deep, now EPDM product, which is a more, safer for the students. And that's, uh, providing the fill for the grass. The asphalt track will be, uh, laid in, uh, fairly soon. And the issue that we have there is, there's a coating that goes on top of the track. And that coating requires 27 days to set. So the fields, although the project will be completed at the end of August, the, uh, field will not be ready until the middle of September. So luckily, Schaumburg will not have a home football game until, uh, September 14th because of this track situation. Then we get the Fram. Uh, right now, the auditorium parking lot is currently under construction. Uh, the mechanical work and life safety work is in progress. The dugout for the baseball and softball fields have been done and completed. Uh, the football field, right now, they're as, they're rolling the asphalt base. And they'll be putting in the turf in, um, fairly soon. Uh, we do have an issue with the home, uh, first home game at Fram, which will be on, uh, let's see, uh, August 31st. And that'll be moved on to Saturday, and then we play that Palatine at 2:00. So, and then the tennis courts are completed over there, too. And then Palatine, right now, the tennis courts have been completed, but, uh, they'll be probably painted in the next couple of days. And that's pretty much it, what's going on.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz, did you go as well?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, good. Thank you guys both for going across and doing all the looking.
I do want to add one, though. At Hoffman Estates High School, the, um, math office and the special ed office has been redone. And it's been done by, by our staff here. Um, it's absolutely phenomenal. It's, uh, it, it just looks absolutely wonderful. Uh, I think the teachers are going to really, um, enjoy the, the surroundings that they have, the outlets for their technology and everything. And, and, you know, and kudos to, uh, to our maintenance staff and, um, for what they've done there. So that's really wonderful.
Thank you. This brings us to our announcements for your review. And then the next item is entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meeting, meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Matter relating to an individual student, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives, and probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz, aye. Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Suggested motion that the closed session minutes of December 14th, 2017, January 18th, 2018, February 1st, 2018, February 15th, 2018, March 15th, 2018, April 5th, 2018, April 26th, 2018, May 10th, 2018, May 24th, 2018, and June 6th, 2018, no longer require confidential treatment and are to be approved and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz, aye. Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Acceptance of retirement requests of staff members. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Catherine Knapp effective May 2021, according to the master contract on the District 211 United Support Staff. Deborah Morrow effective December 2020, according to the master contract on the District 211 United Support Staff. Cheryl Palmer effective June 2021, according to the master contract on the District 211 United Support Staff. Elizabeth Palumbo effective June 2021, according to the master contract on the District 211 United Support Staff. And Judy Ann Quinn effective Ju-, June 2019, according to the master contract on the District 211 United Support Staff.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz, aye. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recap? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.